Main standing for Pledge of Allegiance, led by Bob Summers.
Again, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to be able to do this and that this council continues to support this kind of activity. Let us pray. Father God, we come before you and we thank you so much, Lord, for your presence. Without your presence, Lord, we just couldn't function the way that we need to. And so, Father, we thank you for your blessing upon us. Lord, it's no news to anybody that we live in a world that's very challenging, facing challenging times. But, Father, we thank you that in the midst of this, in the midst of the challenges and the struggles, there's a lot of good things going on, too. Help us not to ignore the good things that are going on. Help us to be a part of the answer instead of a part of the problem. And we thank you, Lord, for this council. We thank you for the responsibilities they have of the decisions that will affect our city, and we know by ripple effect, it affects our county as well. And we just thank you, Father, for each and every one of them. We ask your wisdom to rest upon them. May they sense your will, and may they make decisions according to your values, which are the values that will carry us forward. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy, for your grace, and for your love. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton, here. Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Yes, here.
Mayor Protim McFay.
Here.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council might disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we move on to citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Just give your name and address, please.
Robert Smith, 51 North Fifth Street, Papa Bluff, Missouri. I thought I'd be remiss if I didn't come by and thank the City Council and the city of the support of the St. Vincent de Paul project downtown. We've opened the doors, and the mayor has been able to see it. Thrift Store and The Pantry is now operational downtown, and what's the beautiful thing is we did save a building downtown. That's where it probably would have been beyond saving another year if we hadn't. So, as we plan, I know that downtown corporations also think of trying to develop the lots across the street into a park and parking area and restrooms. And I just would like to encourage the city to support that in any way they can. I know the budget time is coming up to start planning for next year, so I wanted to put a bug in some years. But anyway, I wanted to thank the city, and anytime you want to stop by and see the Nutrition Center and Thrift Store, we'd appreciate it. But thank you very much for your support.
Thank you for your leadership, sir.
There's no others? Who wants a consent agenda? The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. Any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so. Now entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the workshop items for discussion, item A, the City Council will discuss change orders in closing out of the walking trail grant. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, this is the walking trail that goes from Shelby Road down into McLean Park. The original bid on that came in way below what the estimate was going to be, even with this $60,000 change. Most of these changes, my understanding, were mandated by MoDOT. Mr. Summers is here to address any questions you might have on the project. He's the engineer.
Good evening. Bob Summers, 4061 Highway PP, Papa Bluff. And it's okay, I'm going to approach and pass on that to the council.
Thank you, sir.
We ended up, as you'll read in front of you, we had a project that had a budget of approximately $563,000. And we're going to end up actually underrunning that project by about $43,000, even with the change orders that we implemented. As Mr. Massingham noted, the most of the changes that are out there were required by MoDOT for a whole slew of different things. But the largest change order was because we did actually have the extra money, and the park department wanted to move the trail to give it a little more life, if you will, and run it through some treat areas. It turned out really, really sharp. We were very pleased to work with Frana Burger. The project went smoothly, and I believe this week Fran, by the way, everybody, this is Fran Cronister. She's in charge of the project and her husband, although he's not in charge of the project. And she did a wonderful job managing it. So, at the end of the day, you may or may not recall, the city was responsible for 29% of the bill. Your original responsibility was a little over $163,000, and the city's going to come out at the end of the day with the completed trail with the responsibility of approximately $150,000. Now, you're going to note that some of the numbers in here are not finalized, and that's because the final change order, which you'll notice on the back page, it's actually a negative number of about $3700, has not been approved by MoDOT yet. So, we were relatively certain that this is the number that will end up, but until it's approved by them, we can't swear that that's the case. We worked hand in hand with Clark, and we worked through all the small snags that we had, and it turned out to be a good project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have on the project.
It looks nice, Bob. I'm proud of it. One of the things that happens by nature of the terrain there is I know they have worked those banks and seeded them, and they look perfect. And unfortunately, within a day or two or three, we get a terrific lorraine, and of course, it eats it out. Is there, I guess we'll stay with that till we finally get it out?
Well, there's two answers.
Okay.
And both of them are good. The first answer is that the project can't be completely closed until 60 days, I believe it says in here, August the 28th, 2017. At that point, we will go in and reassess the vegetation establishment. If it's not been established based on MoDOT requirements, then they will actually get another 60 days. It won't, I believe that's the case, or is it 30 days? They'll get a time extension, but their project will not be closed out, and we will be holding some money so that, I believe MoDOT wanted to hold $2,000 or $3,000 to make sure they would come back and do that. The second important thing to note is that in the areas where the real washing has occurred, which is only maybe one or two, two or three spots throughout the trail, they're going to bring in some mats, and Frana Burger actually agreed to do that at no cost to the city. So, like I said, they've been very stand-up-ish, and they're going to come in and take care of business. Yeah.
I did want everybody to understand, too, the city's portioning comes from Park Department, not general fund or...
Right, yeah, I should have said that before. I caused a problem. Okay, so what we're hoping is that at the next council meeting, you guys will actually approve all of the change orders that were involved with the project at once, and we'll be done with it other than the seeding portion, which we'll hold that money and pay them once vegetation is established. Any further questions?
The seeding portion, I suppose, is not only on the bank, but those areas between the highway and the trail that unfortunately, those guys have had it looking just perfect two or three times, and sometimes some cars have cut through it when it was wet. But that is a part of their solving.
The answer is, the answer is they're good guys, and they're going through and fixing those things up. But also, it's not really, if somebody damages the trail, it's certainly outside of the scope of their project. So we hope we can continue to work with them and find a good median ground that everybody's happy. There are a couple of corners on the job that we probably will need the city to come in and put a quarter load of gravel in. I mean, just an area smaller than this square here where trucks go around the corner and we're just not going to grow grass in that area because people aren't going to quit running over it. But outside of those couple of small issues, I think, I know that they're going to establish the grass between the edge of the road and the trail itself. I know tons of people are already using it, which is awesome. And if it connects into Shelby South, bidding out Thursday, which is great for the city, the trail system is just, is going to be an incredible thing that I'm really happy to be part of. So, it's a good deal for Papa Bluff. You guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Another question, entertain a motion, second, move this to the voting session to be held August 7.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the City Council will discuss authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency relative to the firefighter grant program. Mr. Winters?
Matt Winters, 3019 Ferrer Street, Papa Bluff. Worked with the Regional Planning Commission. For those of you that haven't met yet, Mr. Davis. Back a couple, two or three months ago, we worked with the chief stalker in the fire department and submitted a grant to FEMA's Assistance Firefighters Grant, and that grant was approved by FEMA. It was a little bit different than what we'd originally requested. They did award $141,715, which would leave a match of 5% for the city of $7,085 to purchase 24 SCBA units at $6,200 each. And FEMA requires the department accept it, or the city accept it, or not accept it, or...
So, we just need a motion to accept it.
Move to the voting session, August 7.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will discuss a contract for administrative services between the City of Papa Bluff and Ozark Flud Hills Regional Planning Commission to administer the firefighters' grant for the fire department.
So this is me coming and asking you to clean up a mistake that I made. Back when I came with the chief and we asked about permission to submit the application to FEMA, I didn't ask if I could write it for you and charge you a fee for writing it if it got funded. So we found out it got funded, and I went back through our contracts and realized I didn't have it, and working with Pam and Lori, looked back through the minutes and found out that I didn't ask you to approve it. So what we have, I've sent a copy of our contract to Pam, and what we charge is 3% of the awarded amount, and that would take care of our grant writing fees and me working with the city and the department to get everything processed online and get the units bought and make sure that everybody stays within the rules and regulations of the grant. So, anyway, hopefully, you're gracious of my work I did for the chief and will correct my mistake, so.
We are very thankful for your work, and I make a motion and we move it to the voting session on August 7.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got you out of trouble.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to item D, the City Council will discuss a request from Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to operate the drive-through lanes for a proposed banking business within a C-2 General Commercial District for property located at 2910 Barron Road. The applicant is First Missouri State Bank, 1902 Sunset. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, this is a request from First Missouri State Bank at their soon-to-be bank location on the north end of town. All conditional use, all drive-through service windows require conditional use permit. This is in the C-2 General Commercial District. They will have five drive-through lanes, I believe four of them are actually for banking, and the other one will be ATM. Five, and I could read through my drawings, I believe that they can stack 25 to 30 cars, so I don't see any impact on any of the roadways in the vicinity, which is one of the concerns that's always needs to be addressed. At this time, the land is vacant. A portion of the property was formerly utilized by the MoDOT district office. Surrounding land used to the north, south, and east is C-2 General Commercial, and to the west would be county land across the W Highway. This is property that they acquired from Larry Hillis after he had consolidated some properties up there. Drive-through window and lanes for any commercial business requires a plan that will deal with traffic in such a way to have little or no impact on surrounding streets and/or businesses. The site plan submitted shows that at least seven cars can stack in each drive-through lane without any impact on Barron or W Highway. Went through planning and zoning without any questions or concerns, and staff and Planning and Zoning Commission both recommend approval of this conditional use permit for the drive-through window with the following stipulation. This permit is to be granted to the owner for this specific business, and any other business locating on this site needing a conditional use permit would have to reapply for a permit. Questions for me? Thank you.
entertain a motion, so we can move this to the voting session to be held August 7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council will discuss amending ordinance number 7623 relative to personnel regulations for city employees. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, if you remember, we discussed this earlier. The wording and the ordinance made it sound like if anybody, any employees lived outside the city limits when the ordinance was passed, that they could live anywhere they wanted to from then on, you know, St. Louis, or Kansas City, whatever. What I've done is insert a paragraph that says if employees presently living outside the city limits moves, he or she must move within the boundaries of Butler County. I'm not sure that's the perfect wording, but that's the intent, I think. That was the intent when we passed the ordinance.
In order to maintain their job? Do you need to add that to it? In order to maintain their position or their job?
Should we put that in there?
I mean, it seems basic, but that's really what it amounts to.
It's contained in a larger provision of the statute presumed that's there. I mean, you can put it in there, but it actually, from a legal point of view, would be redundant.
Okay.
Other questions, entertain a motion, second, move this to the voting session to be held August 7.
Make a motion.
Motion second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the City Council review bids received for C Street rail crossing improvements. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is coming to you as a workshop and voting request because of the altered schedule for the council meetings that we had in the past month. We opened bids on June 15th, if I'm not mistaken, and received two bids. I could be wrong on the date, it's been a while. But we received two bids, and prior to that, we had brought the grant agreement to the council where we could cooperate with MoDOT and Union Pacific to do this project on C Street Crossing, to improve that crossing in preparation for Union Pacific to close a different crossing. They are going to close a crossing. We've determined that C is the best one to, and most viable one to leave open, so that's what we're going to do, or that's what we're proposing. We got agreement from MoDOT and Union Pacific and a promise of approximately $198,000 from the two entities. Even though the low bid came in about $10,000 higher than that, we feel that it is a good value, that we want to accept this, and the bid was for approximately, good for 30 days from the bidders. So we wanted to go ahead and move this process forward, even though we're not going to start tomorrow or next week, or maybe not even the following week on this project. But to take advantage of what we feel was a reasonable bid, that's why we're asking this to be brought forward now. If you have questions that I might not be able to answer, I do have Todd sitting with Mathis Engineering here tonight, and he did the design work on the crossings that were submitted to MoDOT and Union Pacific. And I think it's going to make, it's going to make a nice entrance coming off of Business 60 down C Street to the lower east side of Papa Bluff. Any questions for me?
Since you're not starting the project right now, is there a expiration date on their bid?
Technically, when you get those bids, unless you specify otherwise, those bids are good for 30 days. And we're about at the 30-day period because we didn't have our meeting in, our last meeting in June, and when we had the bids, we didn't have enough time to get it in and do the advertising, you know, for the meeting you had in June. So, but yes, that is, that is why we were asking for it to be worked shop and voted.
But if you're, that's not my question. If you are not starting the project right away, and you accept this lower bid, do we have 60 days, 90 days? How long do we have before we start the project before they don't have to validate their bid?
In the beginning, their intent was for this to be completed in October of this year. Union Pacific has been the entity slowing the process up, but we would like to go ahead and do this because if they decide they want to close B Street and we haven't completed C Street to their satisfaction and our satisfaction, that's where we would end up with a major problem for being...
I understand. I just don't want us to not be able to go forward with the project because they say it's been too long, materials cost more, we have to rebid it. So that's why I was just asking if there was a date.
Right. Mr. Avery, may I clarify?
Yes.
I think I understand what the councilwoman's asking. The question is, is there a deadline for them to begin the project? The answer is, the bid that was submitted did not have a designated date of offer and acceptance. Therefore, they had, we had 30 days to accept the bid. Once this council, if the council does, accept this bid, then it locks it in, and there is no deadline for performance other than what is designated by the city. So, the bid, once we accept it, is locked in, and they're obligated contractually from that, from tonight's point on, or whenever you do it. And we don't have to worry about an offer that is not accepted expiring. Does that answer your question?
Right. I just thought it would be in good order to have it if used by a certain date because, you know, the materials continue to go up, and I could see how they would not want to honor that bid if we didn't have it in writing. I just feel like it'd be good business to have a, if completed by December of 2017 or some date in there. I just felt like we needed to have something to document, otherwise they could withdraw their bid.
The actual performance standard will be set, the fact of the matter is, a bid is an offer and is either, can be withdrawn or can expire until it is accepted. Once you have an offer that is accepted, it becomes a contract, and then the terms for completion...
They're bound by that at that point.
Are bound by that.
So there will be a date on that document, then?
There will, yes. Yes, there will. And there will be an order of notice to proceed as well.
I mean, I think it's much needed, I want to do it. I just feel like we need to protect ourselves.
And that'll be included in the notice to proceed that is issued on that, and we can't sit on it and, you know, until October and say, here's your notice to proceed, you got to have it finished in two weeks. You know, that's part of that process, but the binding contract is created once you accept it, if you accept it tonight.
And there is another facet of that as well. We are acquiring a property that has to have a house, a structure removed from it because we're removing access to it. So that's coming out of, and that was in the original project description, so that's part of the project, and we're working toward that as well. So we're bringing all the things online that will allow us to begin the project.
I think it's very worthwhile, and I think you're, we should go ahead and proceed, but when you say we're not starting, didn't know when we'd start, that just made me a little alarmed that they could withdraw their bid.
We have to do some coordination with Union Pacific and MoDOT, so that's why, you know, I don't have a start date that it's going to be the 27th of this month. You know, I mean, I can't tell you that that's the...
I understand. Thank you very much.
And it was a local company that got the low bid?
It was. It was RL Person's Construction. Actually, both of the bidders were local. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we move item F to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second. Motion second, move it to the voting session tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the City Council will discuss the paving of Garrett Street.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Garrett Street, which is loaded, or located in the northeast part of the town, it's a gravel street that actually runs into a paved street later on. It goes to the Knights of Columbus Hall. The county's been wanting to cooperate with us for a couple of years. They have a stockpile of ground asphalt they've received from MoDOT. They've been using this on some of their county roads. They grind it up and mix it with oil and put it down with a paving machine, and they've been wanting us to do that portion of the street. It doesn't meet our street standards, that's why I bring it to you all. The code of ordinance does allow you all to make those changes if so needed. It's not a smooth surface, like if we were overlaying it, more of a rough surface, but it's, I guess, better than gravel and does leave a hard surface if we decide to overlay it later.
I think it's a worthwhile project. I've spoke with other cities, and it has worked well for them, and it also builds a good base for some point in time where we may be able to asphalt it or make it a more permanent street.
And the county would be using their paving machine. Probably what we would be doing is providing some oil and dump trucks to haul some of the asphalt.
Cut down on dust, and, I mean, again, I don't know how it could go wrong. Seems like it'd be a worthwhile project.
I think I just need a consensus from you all of...
You don't need a motion?
I don't think so.
Yes.
Yes, I think it's good.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to action required items, Bill number 8008. The City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the C Street rail crossing improvement.
Move for first reading, Bill number 8008, by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Ripson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of the C Street Railroad Crossing Improvement Project for the City of Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading, Bill number 8008, by caption only.
Second. Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Ripson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of the C Street Railroad Crossing Improvement Project for the City of Papa Bluff.
Move for adoption of Bill number 8008.
Second.
Motion second to adopt, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Protim McFay?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8008 is passed. Item B, the City Council and City of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting, which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the Openshooting Law, Section 610.021.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.9, 1.11, 1.12, 1.13, and 1.14 in the revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Protim McFay?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Mr. Massingham?
Just a couple of things. Bids for Shelby Road Phase Two are due on July 20th, this Thursday. I was told earlier tonight, I think he said 16 firms had picked up bid specs for that, so we ought to get some good bids, I hope. Talk about mowing a little bit. Over the weekend, we had our street department out mowing the cemetery and airport and some rideaways. They're just really behind right now, and we haven't been able to keep part-time helps. Our part-time salaries are down, and we haven't really used much overtime. What we have used will probably get reimbursed from FEMA. So they spent all day Saturday mowing and probably the following day, this following Saturday, and hopefully we can get caught up. That's all I have.
All right.
Anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?